You're waiting for me?
I'm so sorry.
You're waiting for me.
Okay, there's thirty-one. I'll call the meeting to order. We do need to advise everyone that it's being recorded and we need to select a chair for our first meeting of reorganizing the board. So I will accept nominations for chair.
I nominate, we nominate, we nominate Dan.
And third, vice chair.
And second.
Any other nominations? I'll move in there.
Hi.
Thank you all. I do. For your son, this one will be a few days. Want to welcome April, graduate senior, election degree. Just want to go over a couple of things. Our meetings usually run, I mean, they don't run, modify the office rules. We're relatively informal here. You guys have been here in the past. Agendas are set by the chair, sets the agenda. If there's anything I'd like to add to the agenda, send it to Patty and I and we'll review it. A possible addition to the agenda. If there's an item that you wanted to bring up on a night like this evening, make a motion, bring that up and with the job of the board, we can have the agenda on the fly. As we have a newer board now, we'll attempt to try and sort things down a little bit and explain what's going on in the process. Again, at any time, guys, questions about anything, some comments, names, let me know and we'll go over it. Now, okay, everybody, no, everybody should go around the table and just, okay, that's right. No, okay. I'll start over there. John Hurst is principal at Brule's.
Paul Penny-Larren, principal here at Brule's.
Patrick Hurst, superintendent.
Is this English?
Yeah. Pat, I know the show.
Any else?
April Hawn. Dan Hawn.
If you don't know Josh Powell, who's the facility director, is that your plan?
It is.
It is, okay. All right. Get that out of the way. Do need to reorganize the board. I don't know if anyone's seen this. We've got a list, there's actually a couple of additions here. These are generally most of the subcommittee work that we do in a given year. What I'll do is I'll down through it, I'll kind of explain what each one generally does, time commitment. If there's somebody that's currently here that's currently in this position, I'll let them speak to kind of what's going on, what requirements are. The first one I have is vice chair. I believe applies, the chair is not here for doing their duties, this person has to take over.
Do you have a nomination?
Absolutely.
I nominate Pat.
Pat. Nomination, Pat. Okay. Any other nomination? You're down? You're all, you don't care about that?
I'm fine.
Okay. All are favorite, Pat?
I love Tyra.
Okay. NBC representative. This, this position is typically labor intensive, well, is labor intensive, it's not that it tend to get here. Individuals have a better than average understanding of the entire budget process, what's in our budget, how do you think about working of finance in the districts, and represent us at the school boards, at the NBC meetings from October, November?
Yeah, figures begin in the month, one of the weeks.
And we actually lost both. We have a voting member on that board and we have an alternate. So we just did fill two positions. First one being the NBC rapport, section voting member.
Mr. Chair, I'd like you to make a motion after you find out the duties of each position and the time commitments that we possibly tabled for tonight. Marina did it, so we can all consider where our strengths are and come back to the table. We have two new board members, I could be beneficial if there's something urgent, if we could get all these nominations, make a decision.
One second, one second. We'll discuss it.
I'm gonna say we've, um...
But man, that's...
Manifest review.
Yeah. We've never done one.
We've never done one.
The way of making the selection because we've had times, we've had multiple new members upstairs.
Do you have any comments, questions, kind of?
Typically, and to sort of help that approach to our new, there are usually some that unless you know that you have a passion for a particular strength, there are some that probably are more supportive for new members to become part of. And I think we usually, when we're new members, we try to limit the number of additional meetings that we can attend unless, again, there's some sort of, you know, passion or whatever, and we're going from, too many folks think, oh, it's school board, it's two months, it's not Manchester, it's one, it's one a month, so I think in two months we can handle. And then all of a sudden, you're on a committee on budget, which is every single week for some months. And then at the same time, maybe you're on another committee that needs one every two weeks. So historically, I think we've tried to direct folks to, if they look for any sort of advice, to meetings, to committees that are less labor intensive at times, that's what we kind of get a sense of what this meeting will cost. They'll know pretty quickly because of the report that folks give us. Does that make sense?
Sure. I'm not, I just want to make sure I'm recognized accordingly. The reason I'm making the recommendation is because we just received a list of these titles and not the duties. And even though people are new to the board, they may still have gifts and talents that they can bring to the position. They may not be given to a junior member of the school board and I just, for, even if it hasn't been done before, to do it thoughtfully and carefully for a year.
Any questions, Pam?
Good. I guess I would leave it up to the senior members to decide if we agree to move forward tonight or not. I would just serve ones that are present, put that aside first, I hope. I wonder if we did, we, friends rather than dominate someone as we go, so that we can see the whole picture of what you're talking about before we start.
Yeah, that's what we do last year.
Okay. We'll just sort of, uh, while we go through it and then reconsider table, other time. Okay. So it was good with NBC, NBC alternate. Okay. Maintenance Facility. We established this a couple of years ago, we started looking at the village school, we did facility study. I'm not sure that we've eliminated this yet with the closure of village school in the normal year with this. It's really kind of a liaison position with Josh and primarily with Josh, just to kind of get a sense of what's going on with the facility. They have low impact, not a lot of hours, just keep staying forward with what kind of's going on in the, in the district. So that's that. SAU exec board, this is the voting representative from this board to the SAU board. That board makes decisions regarding SAU business, the DA SAU business, they help develop the budget of the SAU. Pat has been on the floor, you know, helping out, what else you guys do?
Yeah. Typically, we meet once a month, however, there's a lot of negotiation with the other members of the, of the member term of the SAU. This coming term, the Pembroke Board Representative will be the chairperson of this, of the SAU exec board and the chairperson of the four emergency boards, which means it is twice a year. If there are specific issues that come up, the board, you know, it's, it's like...
What's one of them?
Um...
What, what's one of them?
Once a month, the SAU exec board. Date and time, or if it's nothing that's particularly determined by people's schedules, but it's not like ours, which is, you know, but it's kind of sort of a...
Questions on the SAU exec board. CIP, we, the town has a CIP review committee that meets through the summer month, August.
Pretty much, yeah. Well, I'm a part of the line.
They review all the CIP projects, town line, actually, school district. We have a member, that's a voting member, right?
Yeah.
On that board, and this person also brings school districts, CIP items forward, consideration, the advisory board, and they go through the CIP list and they kind of prioritize the bits to how they feel each one should be done, or if it should be done, what priority each one of them takes. Great forward for a junior, what you want to...
And it really informs you of what's actually going on in the town also. There needs to be a lot more of the inner workings than typically would otherwise. So, I enjoyed it.
Can you spend some time with Josh?
Yeah.
Did you write quite a lot about the facilities, the projects going on, the needs of the district, very informed, it's a good board for society. Senior scholarship, I've never been on the board, I can tell you.
So this is the trustee's scholarship, it's a speculation of the funds that are approved over the year. We have applicants who are both graduating seniors as well as alumni who apply for scholarships and basically this committee gets together and gives them the funds appropriately based on merit and deed, things of that nature. And I might add that the person who oversees the committee is an absolute delight to work with, so.
One day, one day deal?
One, two hours, two hour commitment and probably a big bank or a bank.
That's a pretty easy one. Manifest review, this year has traditionally gone to the junior, regular support, historically. Doesn't need to stay that way, but historically, what this is, is a review of attention to the finances of money from our district, all checks that have been cut, you know, who they didn't cut to, you want to look at and review them with as much depth as you want, ask questions. It's a great way to learn where our money's going. That's kind of like, I was gonna, I know I started, you and I probably started, Ellen.
Somehow I need to put this on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Trying to get you out of the...
Because you were chair and that made you junior, after that, it gave you...
Oh, that's true. I'm a senior, thank you. Good call.
So great for junior members because you really want to know where the finances of the district's going, where the money's really going out to. It's a great way to study. Ben?
I just recall, and had a birthday from long time ago, at one point, there was a question whether or not we could take the packet home, we said we could review it and because certain statutes we have to do from here, they just may want to, you can question, you can study and do all of that.
And you can, we can also come to the SAU office, especially if the two new members , if asked for it, as a, we can have the signature folder available, it's more convenient and a lot of companies at the SAU office are usually welcome to do that.
Sure, we can have a little, a little, yeah, to, to...
Yes, it's usually there, right?
I just remember Jen or Uncle Drew and his family one night and she went to pick them up and take it home.
AREA advisory board. This is not met in a while now. We, I'm gonna go back, I'll, I'll go back kind of a little bit. About a year or two ago, all the boards requested an AREA meeting, eventually to take a look at the AREA agreement, review it and decide whether or not we want to open it up, negotiate or change. That was done about...
Two years ago.
Couple of years ago. As part of that, each school board sent three representatives to this meeting. And people over here are, were the ones who volunteered for that. We kept this up, this advisory board posts up, because had a few questions concerning some other boards, and the idea there was we're gonna try and meet a little bit more frequently, but hasn't really happened.
We had a last meeting, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, correctly.
Yeah. This makes a bad luck with it, more than anything else, not due to the lack of effort.
There's, there's another one coming up. I think we may have, it, the need to meet was, became not as critical because Amber put the tuition form together, so every month she's giving our AREA just an update on their, their enrollment, the projected enrollment, what their tuition amount is. So they are getting more frequent information, so the committee had asked, I think, for three, four...
Yeah, I was reporting it in the year.
So we, we did schedule that and then it's up to the committee whether they feel there's a need for it.
Yeah. Up to three meetings a year, that one probably could be felt on the new one. It's probably needs to create screen to put everybody, spend some time. It gives it some, it gives us a better, people a better understanding of how that agreement works and the dynamics that can lead to that. We made a decision not to open that agreement two years ago. And the reasons for not opening it were probably varied depending on district. So let's, if you're interested, I can do more background story, but ultimately, we decided not to open that, but we met three or four times before we came into that agreement. So, another good committee, really could be, could be fit by just about anyone. We have the school board association delegate, great for junior people, again, this, did you go? Did you actually go in?
Yeah.
It was Saturday.
Yep.
For lunch. Yeah, the whole day is Saturday. Eight to four, nine to four, enough?
It was like nine to two, maybe, sometimes like that. Yeah, it was, I mean, you got to meet a lot of the people from around the whole state. There were a couple of presentations, which, one of them went kind of long on it, I'm pretty tensey, but they were good presentations and then, you know, you're voting on all the articles that come before that you want NH, SBA to represent your district in Congress. They're basically, what they are is a lobby, a lobbying organization.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, we all, they send out a list of stuff they're gonna be voting on, these articles that they're gonna be voting on beforehand, and we as a board voted to either support or not support their recommendation. So it was, it was interesting.
Good to know who's, your ancient school board association is. They essentially, we were all members of the school board association. They provide other services, other memorial services, they do...
Do all the policies.
They do all the policies, there's rough drafts before we get on, the sample policies, that we can make our tweets to it and those eventually will become our, our policies. A couple of water work there that they do. They do employee searches, to protect, uh, to, for intended searches, principal as well. I'm not sure how far down we go.
I think it's a, I think it's...
But we, we have utilized those services, they have some legal services that we can utilize in the past as well.
They do a lot of TV too, with my, and they started doing some webinars this year.
The other thing they...
Can you just say what the sacrament means?
Professionally.
Sorry, the sacrament, and, yes, the other sacrament.
It's a TV webinar.
Oh, webinar. Webinars.
The other thing that they're gonna do, they'll do, and they'll do it shortly, it will, it should get notified, I don't know if they will. They do a new school board member session.
We're doing it on Tuesday.
On Friday or Thursday, Friday, do it during the weekend evening. I think they do a, they do a little dinner, sandwiches and stuff there. And it's two or three hours of what it means to be a member, what your responsibilities are, confidentiality, we'll go through. Largely what it means to be a school board member and some legal ramifications of what we do here. Definitely would, I would strongly recommend it.
I, I'm something?
Sure.
So, I have, I've got kind of my office, registered board members for those, so if you're interested in ever attending any of them, you can email her and she'll find you up. She's going to register both of you, but I asked her to hold off until you could confirm the date that you were able to attend.
No, they're not, they're not, yeah.
At the beginning of May, I think. If you didn't get the email yet from the association, I can support it, support it again.
If they do other things during the course of the year as well, we do pray to know.
They're always running.
They're always running stuff, so anytime you ever want to do something, email Patty and, please, 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 sign.
And we've got a clause.
No clause to school board member, the, the district, we've got a small school board budget, that's inclusive school board budget.
Little, little your email.
They were, oh my god.
Originally, since, yeah.
Or you want to get those stuff?
Oh, no, I know. We must get a half dozen of those weekly. We just get like one a month. Okay.
I just, can I add one thing to the, to the, like, if you get emails, one of the big things, if you get emails from any one of us, don't reply all, never reply all because it can be construed as a forwarding.
Yep.
But always reply, just reply to the person who sent it.
It should be, it's informational typically, if you're panicking by email, push out the information, because if you were to try to reply and have a conversation, then it's considered saying you've conducted more than...
Yeah, nice. Probably. Okay. Negotiation team, every three years, we negotiate with the teachers union, new contracts. Generally, if you're a senior board member, two, two board members, such a two-person team, does this, Tom did it for several years. I've done it, I was back at the Tom and I, Steve and I last time. This is extremely tight. This is once a week, updated.
One at a time.
A lot of takes, yeah. It's once a week, as long as it takes, it could one for months, two, three hours in session, if you don't mention a grievance, mediation, and then you can be all there, there. This is a major matter. Yeah, there's probably one thing, if anything, if, 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 granted, it's been about three years, I mean, it's every year, but this is, I, I'm just, my feeling is probably up right here. So, lots of hours, many, many hours involved in the...
And that there is a negotiation.
This is, my, it's actually just about an hour, this is a negotiation. Usually they'll, the new, teachers union traditionally not come to the table during the summer, so they won't, they generally not start now, they'll start in September. So we gotta get cranked, kind of, it's a pretty compressed time schedule, we have it done by, I think, January. But even though it's September, January, it seems like a long time, but it's certainly not quite what you get in negotiations with, with, it goes by quite...
It's only every three years that we agree to it three years.
Right, correct. That's like negotiation point, been three years for last several years, several contract? Three? So, obviously very, very important from a board standpoint and a community standpoint, but we've got a contract negotiation that's hopefully passed by now, so, one of the ones we're gonna have this year. Case board, yeah, I know of it. Does anybody have details?
Maybe once a month on Monday.
Okay.
And since people are sponsored charter schools, we have a seat on their board.
Yep.
They're a full member of the charter schools.
How many people in the board? Sorry.
I stayed with you, he was, they were still planning on moving.
Couple of that.
Anything now?
That is, admittedly, that's probably why we should fill this evening. That's probably why we should fill, can you, one of that given?
I don't know, I think they just had one this week, so it's probably...
Okay. Space needs committee, this largely done, correct? We need to fill in?
Yeah, I, I think what you'll end up doing is starting a new committee with a new name.
I've got a couple.
You know, building committee or...
Hill expansion.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the other, the other committee.
So space needs is, I mean, essentially finished up their work, front people, I don't think you can fill that one. With the village disposition committee, which is kind of in the vote at the moment, pretty much.
Yeah, we have a, in January.
I think we are gonna keep that disposition committee, that's gonna be topic of conversation all later, keep that committee active and put them back to work if possible. What's Tom was on that, as, board member, I don't know, was he a voting member of that board? Or was he just there for...
I don't think he actually was able to make it to our...
Sure, it's a lot.
So, is it space needs?
He was on the space needs originally and then, I, I had a purpose, he stepped back, I mean, he didn't want to...
Right. And that's kind of the way that board has been, I, I think the school board member's been there to help provide guidance, but I don't, I, when we set those up, we didn't really want to take control. But those committees were on it to go naturally, however it went, without the school board input. But we do provide a person to that board, just to, case people have questions, it's a liaison between that and the board, they can ask, answer basic questions about, you know, we've called, we've talked to, to get the information through it. I think we're gonna be looking for them to provide the recommendation to what to do with that building down there, but we'll talk about that later. And the one, the other one that I'm here is Hill Expansion Committee. I don't know if we ever gave that committee a, an official title, but we, we established a committee to, what did the eventual expansion of Hill School, we've got modulars going in this year to Hill. The board's expectation was that those would not be there any longer than the term of the contract, which I believe is five years. At that point, we should have completed the expansion or come up with some other alternative to house all the teams under permanent rules. And we really do appoint someone to that and like, yeah, that committee, we kind of purposely waited, waited on this one to reach out new board and tried to get the village disposition behind us before we found this, but I think it's probably about time to get this one rolling, so, so, that, again, that's gonna just require, same type of things, someone to kind of sit back and listen to the conversation, provide information, I don't think we're gonna get the family's chair or, or drive it, we want this to come out naturally from the public stage. That's all, I think, of some particular one I missed. Okay. So, current motion on the board table, talking on representatives, nominations, do you think? Any comments on that, and want to vote on that?
Definitely some we can pull.
Do you want to go down, go some of them?
Go some of them.
But, something more?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we need to sort of, the motion first. Can we move to...
May I amend the motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
May I, I would like to amend the motion that we table, filling the positions that you're not under a technical deal.
Fair enough. Okay.
Do you, do you, I was, no, I was thinking, okay.
Okay, is there, are there questions? Okay, all of them?
I...
I'll start again.
I tried to say it in the...
Me, too. Okay, so NBC, we got a rep and alternate, honestly, we won't really have anything in this committee. Honestly, we won't really have anything in these committees until the retrospective. Um, and none of us from there begin with, so in the retrospective, um, somebody had.
There hasn't been a date before.
I don't even know if it's like major. Yeah, I think something like that, and I don't know if I'll do it as, as your chair, but that brings up. Well, Cameron, she wasn't, she wasn't here at this time last year.
Right, but I'm sure she'll.
She, um.
It's all question about that one.
Sure.
Assuming the, um, the official representative, particularly a C P government, or would the ultimate position be something that's, that's suitable for somebody new, or?
I, I think we could fill, if somebody had a knack for finals and didn't mind being a little bit, a little bit work, I think, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with almost anybody filling those two spots, you gotta, anyone separate with MBC meetings, you know what you get yourself into. Um, although this year seemed to be a little bit more cordial, if nothing else. Um, it was not, that's not as easy as it's been in years past, so hopefully that will continue to go forward. Um, but this is a lot of stuff, it is a lot of stuff that works, um, just make sure that you've got a good handle on, on the budget and the finances of the district. Um, so I, I'd be comfortable with that.
I would like to continue with the A P group, but I don't want to jump ahead.
To skip one.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that, oh, damn.
Can you, can I do that one first?
Yeah.
Um, thoughts on filling meetings facility?
Yeah, we'll probably keep that tonight, but I haven't finished it.
Anybody have interest?
Uh, maybe. Can I nominate?
Absolutely, yeah, that's right. Any other nominations? All in favor of Jean?
Aye.
Okay. I think you're a exec board, you, you wanna take on this one for a while, or?
Yeah, I think Pat.
Okay.
Because if the chair, she's involved, you know, this year, the chair position is kind of what's going, I think, the continuity should be, uh, should be there.
I have a second, it looks like a, a little question. Um, any other nominations? Especially. Thanks.
I'm just curious, how many have you?
Question.
I'm going to figure out the decision for, for.
Um, so we have an official representative and a member of the S P board. Is that, uh, are those meetings something that are older for the rest of us to attend before?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
They're just a public meeting.
Not, not the non-public section, no.
Right.
Non-public section.
I mean, the same reason we asked about the M B C ultimate, like, some of these are, I'm interested in, I don't necessarily feel that I'd be comfortable taking it immediately, but not being able to attend or being an alternate for a year, and then maybe jumping in next year, so.
They are open to.
Do they move those around?
I was like.
Do they move those around?
You mean location?
Yeah.
No, they're the, they're the.
Okay.
Oh, I was.
They're all.
I was talking about the, I'm sorry.
Uh, I say you're exec board, huh?
The exec board is, is at the conference room of the S A U, the S P union, you know, we are all members of the S P. Um, and we have one coming up four hundred weeks. And those move around based on, um, maybe six months.
Six hours now.
Are, we're having, are meeting at the S P, S P residence, we're being locations for the S P board.
It's quite cool.
And then they have to be out, we will need an arm, so we.
Done, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to be out of that.
Yeah, um, so we usually get their, that doesn't really.
If you're casual, you know.
People test.
People. You know, casual, they don't have time, they don't.
Typically, six o'clock to, and then six thirty, we.
Yeah.
We say April.
Yeah.
We'll have one more, we'll do it whatever.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, and this question would kind of go with disposition as well, as I think there was one, uh, maybe mentioned the same thing may apply to P. But when this is, can go school district representative to be for, um, any decisions that the person is representing on behalf of the board, is that discussed with the board and school before voting?
Depends on what it is, generally speaking, generally speaking, no, they're, they're, they're to represent us, um, we, you know, I think, the president, we can't. Um, occasionally there'd be an item that comes up that will come back to this board for hitting, um, before it's gone up, but not, not often. That's it.
I think prior to maybe this, like, are you discussing about what was happening? And there were no reports. Now we have reports every two weeks, whether we have a meeting or not, so there's transparency.
For Pat to come back, and he did give me an item on here tonight. Sure, he was trying to download what happened to the exec board meeting, we can ask questions, we're raising concerns at that time, so we'll have an opportunity tonight to talk about, on that.
And is there something that needs to be discussed that is not appropriate for non-public, that occasionally are discussed?
Okay, that moment, like, even Monday night quarterback.
Um, no, that one.
No, sometimes there are issues coming up.
That are, they can know what you, you'll be going in for sometime.
Sure, sometimes, yeah, it's a major issue.
If I know about it ahead of time.
Yeah.
Then, yes, but I mean, if it's on the agenda, I suppose, that's, it's an open meeting, so it's a right to go, I'm, I'm actually with you.
But, yeah, we, a, a lot of times, we, as you said, this, we receive information from back from after the meeting's done, but I guess occasionally there's a, there's a big issue going with the S A U office, have it in the back for a team, for the takeout, you know.
And thinking would happen on the P A's board, I think, at.
P A's board, we generally just give it to.
Okay, but it was said that, uh, the district has a voting member on the P A's board?
We do. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Again, we trust the members that we stand to represent it.
Well, it's kind of like, oh, and we have voting, um, budget committee, I mean, we have a voting member of the budget committee. If you put our face on the number.
Again, the, the P A's board is on here tonight, too. We generally know what we're not, like, right now, P A's is working on, trying to be a new building, right? Um, they've been doing that for quite a while, and they will bring us back in the course of how that's going, and you can ask comments, or provide some advice, express concerns, and they'll bring those back to, they'll bring that back to P A's board. I'm sure Pat did the same thing with exec board, we express concerns, something for us every year, those people, fly back.
Okay, so just an answer to that as well, as well.
No, no, no problem. So here are nominations in a second. Let's turn to where we are.
Um.
For Pat.
Oh, yeah. It's familiar, oh, no, questions, yeah, yeah, the motion in a second.
Any other nominations? Any other questions are coming? Okay, all in favor, Pat?
Aye.
Jackie, junior on that last year, I don't know if you would stay there, you wanna hand that on to someone else?
I enjoyed it, I'll do it again, but if more views like to step into that. You have more than one. Everybody's happy to do it, I suppose.
I nominate Jean for the A P board. Shall committee?
Okay. Any other nominations, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor of Jean?
Uh, aye.
Good. P A scholarship. That's fairly easy.
I agree with, I am, I'm pretty interested in that, enjoy that.
Okay. Anybody else? In the right thing?
No.
Andy? Okay.
Aye.
Pat? Any other nominations, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And? Manifest review.
I don't know what I think, what do you?
We're getting down towards the bottom.
I nominate April, anyone?
Okay. Second.
One second.
You guys have any issue?
Yeah, what you guys.
Issue is on, I mean.
I just have questions.
You gotta fill out a list, as long as it take the most time.
This actually is not that bad.
I just have a question, in order to show familiarity, does that need to be done, do Andy and I need to arrange to go at the same time?
No.
How does that work?
Generally, they come at the school board meeting, they're gonna, I'm gonna hand this to you, you're sure. Come with an orange folder, um, if you need more time to review them, that you don't have, that one at the school board meeting, you can get arrangements, it'd be, I think, a lot more to avoid, but you don't have to do it, yeah. But if you need to, it's a transfer, they don't have to do that, no.
Gotcha, okay.
Literally sometime, so the folders like that, there, so if they're.
Oh, don't tell her, that's, 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 this is up, she, she's already nominated.
You survive, oh, you survive, yeah, I think so.
It, it's pretty educational, actually, I, I enjoy.
Longly on a folder read, I think.
Yep, yep, okay, um, all in favor of?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have the advisory board? Can I pack this one, or, or wait?
I have interest in digging into that.
Aye.
I'm only able.
It's great. We could stop at April and do one at a time, if you like.
Right.
Okay.
I'll go.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, April, others?
Do you have the most frequent, um, someone interested in the A R G page?
I'm just having to do it.
What's that?
I'm doing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I think it's done at the first time.
I can see why, I agree.
So now I can, I can nominate me to the cap.
Yes, Pat.
I'm checking.
All in favor of your Pat?
Aye.
Okay. Mm-hmm. It's gonna be pretty much that, but. You have your school board negotiations, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I would be interested in that.
Okay. Um, something?
Nominating.
Okay. Questions, how many other nominations? All in favor?
Um.
Right. Negotiations team. One more on that. Thanks, Dave. I will be going to do this again.
I'll make Dan.
Is it typically at night? It is typically in the afternoon, we get out of work. They work around our schedule, typically.
It does.
Okay, April and Pat, do you, do you want to do that one first? You gotta, you mean, I'll do thirty seconds to think about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I am giving my nomination to Dan.
So, that's it.
It's your first one. Although, there's only, uh, there's only a second chair.
Addie, okay, that. Me? The second. Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay.
You know, I, I really worry about it, I'm sort of.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you don't want to share that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, I've been a union official for over years, I noticed Dave did do it, but he was retired, um, and not, so, I mean, I.
Dave, Dave, the second chair of what?
Say what?
Dave doing the second chair of all, the same type of thing.
Yeah.
That's another one I would be interested in down the line, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
P A's board? Do you want to know what P A's, I put where we're at, okay?
I got to hold down, which I actually couldn't, so I'll hold that out.
Oh. Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what P A's was. Okay, um, anyone interested in things?
I'm interested.
I nominate April.
Any questions, other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The town of Judy, too.
So, you didn't do everything, all right?
No, I got two more, the town of, um.
I want to go back and review this, and then, and then.
Um, there was disposition, this would be taken at the Tom spot. Um, I don't know if this is, I, I really can't say. But my thought is that this committee will wrap up relatively quickly, but I, the nine, three, nine of one.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed doing space needs, I would, if, I don't know, Hill Expansion and, and the disposition will hold on your list, but.
They are holding on this.
I, I would be happy to be, have a liaison to all, because some people either have to do with that project, but it's okay.
Hold it up.
He makes him, one person do it.
And before that.
Good? Perfect?
Yeah, he's got the intercept, yeah.
Yeah.
April? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, you was. It's, we'll have you go for, we'll just have to wait about, Pat will probably get you, you're back up. Pat, you want to revisit, M B C representative and alternate?
Yes.
The style of representative?
Mm-hmm. Um, I would like to nominate Andy, for the, for the team, um, board and office committee.
I'm sorry, um, okay, second. Second. Discussion.
Bring in the fresh perspective. I'm glad to hear about what you know now.
Okay.
I've been wanting to do that.
Okay.
I don't tell. I don't care that.
I'm not all your fault.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I have to try, um, something like that, I guess, I would be a problem. You know, Mr. Munz, you know, not, I.
Did you, uh, this, uh, that, you know, the problem?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm okay with that, um, as long as, well, there's folks here, and I've known before, that I, that advice, and everything's on this.
Can I also try it one time?
But I think just look at the other, I think, that I already.
Don't, don't look at it, you know, I don't look at any of that, I mean, I've got one day per year, three day per year, a manifesto review,
and it's the only one that I really have the type of commitment, on the religious expansion book, that's for sure. I don't think I'm over it, you know, I, I would be comfortable with either the, the rec or the alternate, regardless.
Okay. Another comment, just questions, all in favor of anything?
Aye.
Okay. Well, the alternate. Shop at once.
Not next time, too.
You, you and I do negotiations with no worries.
I'm not, I'm not.
We, we, I need to say imagination, you're not gonna want to come and see this negotiation, it's very time.
I'd be willing to.
It's not at all.
So, should be there.
I'll make that.
I was quick. Second, second, Pat. Okay.
I had to, do, do, that'll be, yeah. Yeah, you also put in there, so you can get questions.
I've done it before, um.
You do all disagree, not all?
Sorry, that's. I'm lost.
Just dumping forth.
Right.
It'll be afterwards, certainly.
I'll just write a script and have JP do it.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I think we filled it out?
Mm-hmm.
Any options, okay? Who? Any tweets or? Excellent, thank you, folks. With that?
You have a table?
So, I guess, I'm, I'm alive with that, I don't know, we can talk later, but, uh, my family did, made a schedule, we have all our draft on Tuesday night, so, like, the hour and a half before the school board meeting, I don't have any school board like that. So if there's a way to arrange for that folder to be here for the execs, or whatever, uh, if they're particularly, have weeks where it's a lot of stuff, I can get there early.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, so you have to go for the initial four, but I can just bring you down, I'm always here, I mean, I can do what you want, whatever, get there.
Shouldn't I ask me, yeah?
That's what I have.
Did you pick someone?
Yeah, you scrub it up, print your name, and then sign it, yeah. Maybe, and one check, and you know, who's gonna be signing, you know.
Okay, I can rewind to agenda two, mention previous meeting, March tip, twenty nineteen, or a couple of new words on board time.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Jean?
Second.
I don't think I'm, sorry, yeah, someone's gotta do it, Jean. I don't think I'm sure, yeah, someone's gotta do it, Jane. Any corrections, questions, comments, or comments? And all the favorit?
Aye.
Aye.
There's two exceptions?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, generated three media business public comments. Reps public, if you'd like to comment on anything this evening.
I just, uh, Anne Wong, um, on my board, um, I just wanted to, um, share again that, um, the school board has a, a higher budget than what was proposed lately, um, budget finish. And I just wanted to point out that, um, speaking with try to just to be a villain, ask the residents, they're going to go to their school board and ask them about changing the non-contacted employee insurance plan. So, for single, you can save fifteen hundred a year, for two persons, ten thousand, for families, four thousand. And you could still get a large group rating if it's one of the employees. So, I just wanted to bring that to some of...
Thank you. Others?
Um, Ms. Carrera, um, the April Board. Um, I just, I just want to know what the, the video's doing? Um, and the sound, is there really a drop in any, is there like, uh, someone that we can contact, or like, a lot of stuff, we need to like follow up on that, or any of that kind of stuff? That's down here?
Can you be cheaper on the, uh, video?
I am a keeper of it, so, we had a technical difficulty last meeting, which is why that meeting wasn't posted, um, with the sound that we have since corrected. Other than that, I know of no sound difficulties happening.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Everybody else? We'll blow out, uh, three media tenders inside. That's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah. Hi, if we have one consent item. And we do need non-public for several items. Um, I mean, to add that K, with eighty...
Eighty, eight thirty? Thank you.
Could they not public? Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just a relation? Oh, that's great.
Question. Um, and talking to people in the community, is there an idea on our agenda that the public can have an idea of possibly how many non-public items are going to be addressing? I know with some of these other, um, items, we have a number. Is that something we could consider adding in the future? Since we've talked about, you know, increasing transparency, I think it would help.
Check on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just a relation, sorry, thanks for that. Chairman?
I got nothing to point out.
I've been holding out on me for a while, uh, just, uh, just agenda.
So, I'm not sure if it's really consent, because you've already approved it, um, but we did, um, receive the updated cut out when you approved, um, field trips in the beginning of the year, that when the information is finalized, that you see it again. Um, so that's why the new contract before you, I don't, um, I know that you necessarily didn't go on, because you did approve it. But...
This is the annual trip, this is the, um, music festival, the all-state music, um, festival, uh, all of our students in music, voice, going this once a year, um, pretty traditional, and it's pretty student leadership. It's all good, pleasure the board, you can hold on again if you like, I'll be back started.
No, I was just gonna say, we're very tuned in board members, um, maybe to get, have an opportunity to have them, um, weigh in.
Yeah, so what we do is we request that, at a minimum, um, anyone going on overnight trip, provide, you see, to us at least one board meeting ahead of that. Usually the, and the other piece of this is the recurring ones, and we go to Washington Street every year, we go to environmental camp every year. We ask that those come before us as early as possible. The first part of next year will be a whole smoober on the first agenda, that the, the whole, oh, maybe another, uh, we pre-approve them so that they can move forward fundraising as I said, so. We ask them to come back to us, um, if someone planned a trip to Israel and, uh, yeah, so what rest is going on, we want another crack at it. So, they come back to us again just before they go.
Excellent, huh?
But that's how.
Right, I was gonna say, you talk, it wasn't Israel, but we definitely...
I don't know whether it was, but it, yeah, it happened. Yep, it's, I think it let it go, but...
We did.
We talked, talked a lot.
Yeah.
So, this is what this is, um, this is a, a recurring just before they go. Um, so, we're welcome to hold on it, we don't, we need to, we have our approved it.
Performed, but it turns different, trip by trip, but there's something like this, it's something, um, it's funded from, it's funded, budget versus something with fundraise or...
This, this particular one is funded by the, it's actually...
Or, it is, it also pays the dues to allow them to, or...
Right.
You know, manual do and be for that...
There's an organization there, there in, uh, currently, that I should, uh, the capture NBA, usually...
And...
The patient, and that patient, so...
There you go, excellent.
With a shout out to Jane, we had it too.
So, we do pay dues to members of that organization, and then the kids pay, I believe, a hundred and fifty, hundred seventy five. And that provides them hotel rooms for a couple of nights, and, um, they, they perform in, uh, chaplaincy, uh, for the hours. Uh, it's great to do on Saturday, I believe, it's great event there at the time. People want to, who's that, uh...
I need to vote on that, we approved.
Okay. Second, sir?
What's final?
Okay, question, comments? Sir?
I just have a question, not about this specific request, which is clear about what was said, it comes back, we might have, we will have...
At the latest, one board meeting ahead of one year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there different indications that go work, the international drill, or is it something that's the way?
Not necessarily, no.
Not at the time.
No, um, it comes, I mean, again, we look at each one on an individual basis.
Sure.
So, like I said, there was a year that was under asked, and a year that we lost, the travel agency, the, the tour company, we've had some issues over the years.
Okay.
And we tried to streamline, streamline the process, only four or five years ago, we kind of came up with it.
Came up with...
It seemed to be, seemed to work pretty well, um, to give the board a second, looking at, the situation's changed at the, at the end of the month, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, all the favorit?
Aye.
Aye. That's only, that's only, that's why I'm wondering.
So, the, um, can you give me an update on fiscal year nineteen, Amber did run those projections right now, and it's looking on the appropriation side, that we have, um, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, in surplus right now. Um, that's just appropriations, revenue, we obviously have three more months to collect, but she did sort of run through the typical revenues and, and check on them, and it looks like we're in, um, good shape so far. We at least, you know, a little bit ahead.
That's true, that's true, sure.
Yep, yep. Um, so, we also need to talk about fiscal year twenty budget, um, the board wanted to match the monthly fiscal budget committee number, which was a two hundred and twelve thousand dollar cut from our, um, prior budget. We, um, are looking for some directions, administration has some thoughts, um, ultimately, we, we need to know what, how we want to proceed at this point. Um, the, we reviewed the budget, or I reviewed the budget with Amber, and we're pretty comfortable, we talked, um, earlier about the special education lines, and we had, um, some changes in students that were about two hundred thousand dollars. We cut that out a hundred, and we feel pretty confident that we can cut the other hundred out. Um, we're thinking that if we were to do that, and we got into trouble in special education, we have three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars that we could pass into if we need to. Um...
Do you think, like, the entire two twelve, uh, expense?
No, I think, um, we've had a hundred on the change in students. We have about forty six thousand dollars, um, with two paraprofessional positions that have resigned, and we're thinking we're gonna try not to fill them, um, to the best of our ability. And then we are also wondering if we could perhaps take fifty thousand dollars out of the instructional materials trust, which is at ninety four thousand right now. And that would leave about sixteen thousand dollars that we, um, depending on the direction of the board, we could purchase some of the items that we intend to purchase next year now. Um, or if you direct us to find fifteen thousand dollars in cuts, we would be so.
Just, uh, I could give a little bit of background to past board practice years. Traditionally, this board has not, um, gotten done with the, and told the district where, where to cut. Um, if we've asked for cuts, we generally say, X number of dollars needs to be cut, come back, plus you know what it looks like. Um, and that's where the union members here are coming from, they already, they already know they're bringing through the work, so they've already got it. Um, so, they'll come back with recommendations to where they believe the cuts will have the least impact, uh, on, on the education due to the district. Um, so that's our recommendations for the year tonight. Um, we can disagree with where they want to cut down the, um, to do their, their recommendation.
Um, questions? Go ahead. Um, the first item is the undertaking, changing students, uh, just to clarify, that means, we get a certain number of special ed kids, they have a, there's a dollar bond sort of attached to them, and looking towards next year, it looks like there's like a less...
Yeah.
So you're saying if someone moved in, district mid-year, you gotta reserve, but set up a draw-up?
Right.
So I'm making sure it was our statement.
Yep.
Others?
Questions?
What was, I'm sorry, I missed the note, what was the dollar bond attached to the two paraprofessions?
Uh, approximately forty six.
I just have a question, just to kind of clarify, the ask, is the ask, um, asking us, do we want to ask about another sixteen thousand dollars in trust?
Well, I should technically, there's three asks here.
Okay, what are the three asks?
So, the first ask is, are we okay with where they sign the cuts?
Okay.
Second ask is, is it okay for us to recommend withdrawing fifty thousand dollars from instructional materials front fund? And the third ask is, can they pre-purchase items for next year, that are currently in next year's budget with money dividends issue? So, it's three asks.
But I can understand that, right?
Yeah, but the, just to clarify, we would not need to cut the trust funds unless we had to. So, that's for, okay, we don't have to plow through budgeting and find two hundred thousand dollars right now. We can get rid of the budget next year and monitor it as we go, and if we're getting toward the end of the year, and I come to you and say, okay, surplus is two hundred thousand, and you say, now, we, we want to turn more than that back, so we're gonna take some of that special ed money out of the special trust. You have flexibility to do that.
That makes sense.
Good to hear. I just have concerns about cutting a hundred K for, um, you know, student aid, even special ed, because we don't know, could these students return to our district? And so, I understand we have reserve, but do we want to put ourselves in that position?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question, and, um, my thinking, I had it, senior members, right, we have a lot, um, we said three ninety-four, three sixty-four, and it's been... So, so that seems to me like a fairly high number, um, where if we pull, if we had to pull the hundred K out to make up for, at least, considering that around two or three, I think, is that, that's an okay number to be at, and we're...
But, generally... Worst case, uh, I, I got this kind of, worst case scenario, a hundred thousand percent, generally, what could be one of them?
Pretty high, no, it would be pretty high.
So, we've got enough for at least three and a half, four children coming to the districts, which should, should be, um, special ed, significant special ed issues. Um, so, yeah.
Um, and if the students with disabilities did find themselves in our district, we're required to provide them services. So, we still only have, our town has only approved X amount of dollars that we can spend, right? We would have to move other things around to make sure that those students need what they have for us, when it comes to dollars and cents.
We, we have to, we really need, the need of students, um, if we felt that we didn't have enough, um, that is a recommendation, we need to go to the trust to be there.
Okay.
As far as appropriation, it's that, we're, you know, then, that money's a bit appropriate, so I thought, well... Right, but from a budget standpoint, you still can't, I thought, figure out a budget.
Yep, there was the special education money to just be over, so...
We got to find the places we got. Sir? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Right, one other question, um, any information on the last time, there's been any withdrawals from the special interest?
A little while.
I can, I can find out, we have a nice meeting, that'd be great, thank you.
This has been a while. And we just throw up...
I don't remember, I, I will find out, though.
I took a draw, I'm not gonna do this, I...
I think we did take a draw, but it wasn't to a catch strike.
No, no, no. Sir?
Oh, on the, the left, I didn't, the leftover sixty three thousand, how many do this year really make the decision to do some of the current purchases? So, rather than wait until next year?
Um, I would say, yeah, I was gonna say, you probably have maybe a month, um, before we're gonna be asked to, to be making financial...
But, but that's a pretty, really, uh, request, that's a pretty, fun, 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 a pile on system, I've heard one year.
Uh, one other question, um, the two paraprofessional positions trying out together, how's just the impact to students? Um, what the anticipated, and also to our staff, not to our students, but obviously the answer to that as well, not our place anymore.
So, we, when we project for the number of paraprofessionals in the fall, for the following school year, so we, I asked every special ed coordinator, we look at the paraprofessionals they have, and how many they have budgeting for next year. Um, and in doing so, come back, we had two people resign, and I asked her to look and see if she felt that all the needs could be met, who, all the needs could be met, um, with, without filling those positions, and we said, yes. And so, all, we see this search, and one-on-one, would have to be filled.
And are those two positions timed under the special ed budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, most, just kind of...
Just some direction, yeah, just some direction, you, you know, if you say, hey, go back and cut two hundred and twelve thousand from, you know, where, it's just some direction. So, we haven't done anything right now, and we don't have to do anything until Amber enters the next year's budget into the system.
Always been pretty impressive, right? Sure, sorry, um, the, there was a request, I'd be key from the social establishment, um, you know what roughly the current balance of that is, and what particularly, um, that withdrawal, when you look for this?
Um, the balance is ninety four thousand three nineteen, and there's a pretty wide range of things that we can do, something that, there's, most everything is instructional material. Um, so, again, it would be monitoring the budget next year, if, you know, like, we had to withdraw from that.
Um, just one other question, um, the concern, and I don't, I wasn't involved with the budget that was just passed, it's nitty gritty of it. Um, but I know anytime there's a moving, things break, unexpected cost come up, do we have an padding in there to support this move without unexpected costs coming up? I don't know if it would be prudent to not expend that many at this time, and hold it for an, an anticipated extent, if that may come up for the new group.
You talked about related to the move for the village.
Yes.
We do have a fund established for the move.
Okay.
Um, you're gonna have to press my, I'm gonna judge, I would...
Hundred and seventy-five.
For the five projects. I would assume that the contingency of that, or the top four cases, Shabby, will be, will be the, the final one.
May I answer that, too?
Sure.
I think, um, the, so, the funds that we're in, that we're using now have to be extended by the thirtieth.
Okay.
And it's not happening until after that, so the fund can't be, that's, got you, or come back.
Josh over there will not be able to use a thing until July first.
So, we do not expend these... So we do not expend these funds, then go back to the backup, you're right?
Yep, okay, they're going to trust first.
Or to the trust.
As, as per our order, I go into trust, they'll fill the trusts first, if there's extra money, after the trusts are built, they'll go back on the trust.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? How much do you need? General, here in the board?
I don't need mine.
Does generally okay with the, with the approach?
Okay. Get to that point in a moment.
Okay. Just item fourteen, business, four reports, student senate, should be resigned to take off. Um, that's your support.
Okay, that's fine, all right. Um, it would, it would be me, however, there was a nation regarding two regulations, two professional staff at the SAU, and we discovered that although Cambridge has within its current CBA, a requirement that also faculty member does not complete a contract or resign at a certain period of time, there's a financial penalty to that faculty member. The SAU contract does not contain that nature, so we will be considering that for upcoming contracts. Apparently, we're the only district in the SAU that has that.
No, so whether it's the last one.
Yeah, so, no one else has it, and given the fact that these two folks have resigned one with a two-week notice, pretty much they are out of here. And we have no, no recourse with that. Um, and pretty much, that is the main goal.
This is quite a tiny.
Yeah.
Further budget. Any questions for that? Uh, budget committee, we'll see if it's not a budget committee, better than that, um, because, um, page report, because Dave, you weren't having an update on what's going on with the building.
I didn't, I didn't have the care enough to board anything, so I'm not sure if anything has happened. Oh, I can tell you that the director of Kate's is coming to our SAU membership tomorrow, and he's interested in meeting all the principal and all the leaders, which is a great thing. We were talking about the Kate's meeting, and it's very, and it's, I have him there.
First of all, yeah, I want to know, I think I did first last time.
Uh, we started course registration this week, we're presenting to each of the grade levels nine through eleven individually, walking them through, we are doing new electronic scheduling this year through POMA, so we're walking them through the process, educating them on the importance of paying close attention to what courses they are selecting, but they will obviously be supported by their school counselors, and they should be having this conversation with all their parents, too. All of their materials can be accessed online through our website, the program studies is electronic this year, in addition to hard copies, but the idea is to implement technology in the course selection process that many of our college seniors do this year.
That's great, now I'll make sure I go home, I know what my son's doing.
Probably get them all picked.
I'm sure you'll all set for, I guarantee it.
Yep.
Any other questions, Paul? John?
And we're supporting those eight grades, we've made decisions through, at your hospital lot, they have a lot of choices, but, um, I don't know if you are aware, we have some sad news that Eric, a custodian for many, many years in this district, passed away. He did it three rooms for.
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. Um, and so that was a great loss to us, and, um, we're cheering out, our screen sports are kicking in, we're getting ready for our state test, you board members, our whole building has to pass, so every student in the building has to go through the state assessment, it's quite a chore to put that schedule together. And we are also, something new this year for our school is, our staff currently are putting together a project-based, um, well, it's a performance-based project on the whole grade level, so each grade level, I'm not saying this well, each grade level is putting together a project-based, uh, project that is across all curriculums, that will have some kind of, a band at the end of the, end of the year, that's something really for us, and we're pretty excited about, so apparently everybody's involved in it, it's kind of interesting to see how it goes, people are pretty excited, yeah.
Is it team night?
Yes, each team's got a separate, uh, separate topic that they've chosen, um, I'm not going to do it.
Okay. People see that, it's, that's great.
Yeah, I think, like, the eighth grade, because they go to DC, one of the things was, you know, what, I think they landed on this, was something in fact that, you know, what's not in the mall, that should be, obviously have to go time of research, and try to figure out what should be, you know, those, those type of things, but, like, so, it'll be, I guess it'll be a problem for everyone. So it's a massive undertaking we've had, Chris McPhee has come to the SAU office, come down and guide these people, and set it up, so we're pretty excited about that, but, don't be out of place, let me say.
Other questions for John?
How's the outdoor classroom?
Whoa, I haven't heard about it in a while, so.
Well, like, anything funding is in the way, so, you know, as you know, we have the, the outside classroom, there's a cool part out there, the command or whatever.
Yeah.
And, you know, Josh and I frequently talk about, you know, what actually can you put some more physical tables out, uh, in the, Josh's group, kind of made a nice area for them, and we're working, looking toward the next phase, which may be a fitness, a little fitness, not a fitness area, it's just, you know, discussing, I want, you know, fundraising is, is, so we're going to have to get that large amount of money, so, so we're, we're still on it, you know, what's more, you'd like to see, or I'd like to, so we're working on it.
All right, on to generator five, policy review, please. Favorite term?
So, um, we, uh, yeah, one of them, we put, we have these over waiting for the board members, so we haven't taken any action, I would ask that you renew these policies, even though we're in the third meeting, it's a position that we have to vote on them, so we can give you a couple of meetings if you want to read them, and if you have any objection, you can email them to me, and I'll see if we can draw it for the other board members. Um, and then, just so that you know, we, a couple of these we are, we had sent to the attorney for some feedback, some of them, we used a sample of policies from the board association, but certain policies, we like, the attorney sometimes finds things that are deficient, and will give us some advice on things to add. There's a new stat, I think, the code of conduct that was adopted by the state, this department of education, so that's why those policies are on there, we're working with the building and the staff to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we all have some understanding, so that's why those are on there.
But, yeah, we'll get any action on these things, anyway. If anybody has specific questions, I think you may have had, and then we can pick them up in general again next time. Information, I have a couple, do you have any?
I do have one. Uh, you may have noticed that Josh posted our lead testing results, and that went out to parents, it's a requirement that we posted publicly, um, I think overall, it went really well, there's, um, the level that requires action, is if your testing exceeds point zero one five milligrams per liter, which is fifteen parts per billion, so it's a pretty small threshold, the, we had three areas that we needed to take a look at, one was a faucet in the kitchen at Cambridge Academy, it was point oh two four, Hill classroom number twenty-two that was tested was point three one, and then the nurse's office at Hill was point zero eight nine, so anywhere that potentially a student could get water from, we had checked. We, Josh has taken those out of commission immediately, we look to you, we know that we did that, it wasn't a significant enough result that they, you know, were coming out or, or taking any action, just we said we don't want any, so let's replace the faucet and see how it goes from there. If anything further, Josh will have to speak to it. I have a limit of my, for some supply of water.
These results are in pots per million.
Pots per million.
What type do you do?
Pots per million.
Okay.
So we're not old.
Or, another point, zero one five.
Pots per million.
It's, so it's point zero one five and we're at point zero two four, so it's a little middle of our.
It's standard to PPM, that's a PPM standard, that's a PDP result, but you're fine.
I mean, it.
Fifteen, fifteen parts per billion.
Yeah.
Or point one five milligrams per liter.
Yeah.
These results are in pots per billion, it's a standard of fifteen, you might have a few by the way. You guys are fun.
Yeah, I didn't catch that, I definitely.
As long as the lab report is actually in pots per billion.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're good. Through the water there.
You talked to the DOE about it, though.
I did talk to the DOE, I gave them, I gave them our report, so I definitely.
If the results are actually in pots per billion, you guys are good.
Not the DOE, the, yeah, sorry.
You're like the one pot per billion.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll reapply.
Well, there you go.
At, at the end of the day, we did shut them down, we changed the faucet, we've already retested, and we're, we're waiting on those results.
You're going to be fine.
Yeah, we're already fine, careful.
That's why they keep telling everyone, so it's good to hear someone telling them.
Okay.
That was my answer.
That was yours. Um, a couple of things I'm going to throw in here, committee, committee, two committees we totally have, this district really, and we built, built, we have all that.
Renovation, I do, but we call it.
Renovation, yeah, we, we do a ton of that. We probably, um, we've got a building down in Dodgeville, so you can give a little bit of background, we offered up to the town, town, state, they hired a little truss from the property down to, um, so, that town meeting got the authority to fashion this building, that we could fit. Um, I guess I'll leave it up to the board to, do we want to make that decision as to how we manage that, or do we want to get some guidance from the county to figure out what's established? Is that what I'm asking?
I know, you're asking, but, for something else.
Go ahead.
We had a committee.
Yep.
Um, it seemed to make sense that we would seek their advice, not necessarily a directive.
No, no, I agree.
Okay, but, I think getting advice from that committee would be a natural extension of that committee's charge.
I agree.
I don't know how those, like, are typically done, um, can I, I don't know, if it was all attended, or used time, but I wonder if, but I agree that a recommendation from the committee would be reasonable, I wonder if this is going to be a big topic, if it would be worth having, um, some sort of public hearing on the matter, not a very, but.
Form?
Yeah, so that, once we have that recommendation, the board comes to some sort of agreement, we can announce publicly and give people a chance to give us some feedback, not that we would be followed, we don't act on any of that feedback, we just give a sound, maybe it's, or, rather, of the general, just.
Um, I guess my opinion, certainly that we do make a decision, there may be some financial obligation that we need to consider, we can have a commercial, we also go through the, generally a fee for that, and this was for you, this is next this was for you, may make sense.
If we can get that community reconvened.
Reconvened.
With a recommendation, like, in, I think that that would be a very big help for us, or, I think, if we land things away and set up, you know, do the public plan.
Anybody have any other thoughts? I mean, we can, we have freedom to do, some example what we want.
Has it been explored with other boards or superintendents that may have, you know, vacant buildings, or what have you done, or kind of thought about those?
No.
Josh had worked with other facilities directors who have closed buildings, but we haven't specifically talked about, you know, how to come to the decision of what to do with your building, one in Concord, this time in the SAU.
They told one.
Yeah.
They, they wanted a community center?
That's huge.
Huge.
Somebody had the money to renovate, somebody made a comment that, that school, we, Saturday, I thought a maker's made some man, a house, which, that, that, set up a wood shop, and then a sort of metal shop on Charles Lab, people could rent all the jobs, it would be amazing, but I don't have the money, sorry.
And the cost.
Yeah, that means it's a renovation, it's a bringing up.
A basic renovation, that's a positive factor.
Yeah.
Say, Paul, it's awesome.
Right.
So, trying to move back to me, for the general, I think, yeah, I think.
Tuesday's work for you.
Mr. Mike, yeah.
I've been involved in that one time.
Oh, okay.
Contact.
Close to getting you.
Kevin, I think, um, please, just wait and put the chair up here. And, we've got the second one, I don't know, ask protocol, but I don't know, some people chomped it, if we get that one started, um, the Hill renovation, I'm going to call this committee, a whole bunch of that, the Hill renovation committee, we talked about putting them out, we did put a committee together to view our options, and how we'd be determining to, to get us out of modules, and into more classrooms, we've got the community, um, that's really kind of, basically, the committee really kind of, they, they looked at all the areas in the districts, and visually, and not to, not to be shuffling people from the middle school to the high school, to make room, and most of our issues have been flushed out, so, I think it's committee's work, it's going to be focused here on what we can do, and what can afford all the ground that we're using.
Do we have, you said that, we aren't informed?
We have, we have reached out.
Haven't done anything yet. And then recently, at our last public forum, people, like, advertising it, and a couple more people, we want to hear.
So, that one probably shouldn't be moved up, so, typically, Tommy, you tell us, the first time around, it's pretty much in the line, we quickly get voted down, so, second time around, it seems to pass, so.
Oh, something that, um, a community member has mentioned to me many times, when we talk about this as a project, I'm sure he's aware of, that historically, library, fire station, things like that, the longer you delay, you know, construction cost goes up, and the cost will be more, so I think, just as a talk to plan, that's something that, whenever we make this public, that's something that we should repeat over and over, because it's a hundred percent true, and, yeah.
I mean, for that, too.
It's al, it's always rough to get taxpayers to, to, our other money myself included, but, I, the longer, it needs to be done eventually, and the longer we wait, the more it costs.
Right, I think Dave Dory was talking in terms of possibly some school building aids becoming available, and I think that, to Andy's point, it is important that we let our representatives know that we have a need, and building aid isn't something for somebody else, or in another district necessarily, but in the sense it's important to support building and expansion building, or re-application and expansion building aids, simply because we're in the district.
If we can move the project forward to a point where it's ready to go, we better shape the building a couple of years.
I was going to say, the, the department has asked us for the past couple of years to fill out an application, regardless of whether we were actually ready for the project, because they were gathering, to see how many communities needed projects done, so we submitted a couple years in a row that, yep, we're going to be looking for something in Cambridge, so that's hopefully going to help them reform, you know, say, like, wow, we've got twenty-five schools out there that, how many schools that need some help, but we do, you're right again, we do, when we are actually going to apply, we have to be ready with all the information, and that. Um, but we do, you're right again, we do, when we are actually going to apply, we have to be ready to, all the information, um, to do that.
So you guys will work, get them loaded, or loaded initially. I know at least one of the principals, I'm not gonna speak for the other others, but to express the interest from the board to, let's just take a road trip. Uh, have some of our meetings, have an offsite location of the first one. Um, concern was brought up that they won't televise, we can go to TRS, Village, Central A, uh, Hill. Um, this is something we've done in the past. May be good for new members, we're telling them to take a tour of the building when we go. We haven't done it for at least a couple of years, uh, we've been in here. So I just want you to kind of thought of the, everybody else. This may be a good time to move doors, we don't also pick on generally, so no, we're not doing budgets, we're not doing this. If we're not gonna televise some, these, these next two meetings may be good ones for us not to televise, it's not a lot of high budget issues generally.
Could we stagger them so that we'll have many meetings offsite, but then come back here so that it wouldn't be, you know, broadcast and folks could catch up pretty quickly? And then make another one, rather than doing them consecutively, so I think in the past, we've done consecutive.
Yeah.
But we could stagger them?
Not a bad idea, not a, we're, we're, we can, we can.
I would also say, I think sometimes there's to have some, a lot of things to get the meeting minutes posted, definitely specifically, if we do want to not televise, uh, publish as much as possible.
We want draft.
Also, I, I mean, this is maybe not the time to talk about it, but, um, we have the video system, the town hall today, so at some point when it's proven, um, I have wondered about approaching the company, they will follow it or whatever, and see if there are options or some sort of mobile package, even if some of the town meeting chair. Um, specifically, not so much for during the road trip or board meetings, but the fact that our most important meeting was being, you know, the public hearing for the budget. And the town meeting and the school meeting at the auditorium can't be reported. I, I think it's a big problem with the whole system. I have no idea if it's available from that vendor, I don't know anything, but it might be something we wanna explore.
I'm just hoping for the next question.
One comment, um, do you feel tires that out every year, they tire and avoid them, and they come and report the whole thing and they get the C P? Um, I think, yeah, I think you get a price, but if you want, I know.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Since we have something to post, yeah. Hopefully we can achieve it, we probably got a call.
Yeah, he's got it up late.
So, yeah, definitely. To go, again, next year, that might be a good option. So everyone, I, I like that idea, maybe they have gotten a meeting there for a while until, we usually take July and August, I don't know, just. Do you want July?
Why you come back on?
Yeah, July.
So we did them on July on, so probably get to, I don't know that we have, we need to get the village, if people have a desire to get the village, we can.
I don't.
So we can wait until then.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, celebrate in May.
So, so Hill, Hill may be one, one week, two weeks later, to see how the progress is coming. I know it's been working up there, so.
And will be a TRS from a couple of years. For the, for the.
Sure, yeah, I think, what will be a TRS?
A TRS.
Maybe. So maybe we can come over there early or see after that meeting, should you take a tour of TRS, that may be an option.
Uh, and then maybe either start a meeting a little bit later or then we can come early and Josh. I'd say Josh, we could somebody answer the plan, going back through that, that was exciting.
Well, that was, that was fun.
Oh, that shows the academic portion.
Still working.
The last one I have is a question for Josh. Shore connection, I happen to wear another hat, by the way. I'm on Shore Committee, uh, Commissioning Town. Um, have you reached out to the Shore Commission for the Shore hookup?
Not necessarily the commission.
Because you're gonna have to feed that before you hook up, and you're gonna need to check.
Right.
No, we don't, no, we don't do that.
Oh. May not be in response.
No. Give me trouble. Just want to make sure that we're on, the commission's gonna have to prove that connection before they.
How much is that going to be?
Yesterday. He's good.
You're loving that one.
When is the bottom of May, April?
In July.
Yeah, good, good fun. Your fun time.
Like second, third week of July, probably.
I just wanted to say that. The message came forward.
Later.
Any other questions, ladies? You guys, okay?
Hi, um, Conville has last week, so it's been state of the nation for, um, inadequate.
Funding.
Funding for state and ship thought that maybe at some point, um, we may want to consider show support. Very, but I think, I think that certainly communities like us, um, could benefit from a reexamination of three thousand five hundred dollars for students. And maybe one thousand three hundred for kindergarteners. I do not need, or might not need a definition of adequate.
Thirty-six to eighteen, I just read an article where it's no longer kindergarten.
Right.
And that just went, I think that just passed the, the house.
They have an attempt to restructure something.
And that money from Keno now may go to building.
Make it to building.
Yeah, so. Uh, and what, what, the whole movement was that that eighteen hundred dollars that the kindergarteners would get, or whatever, it was actually pushing to the thirty-six hundred that all the other students.
Thank you, anything else?
Make them actual legitimate students.
And NPR is doing a radio, it's been a feature, I'm sure it'll be on podcast as well, um, exploring what is inadequate education. What does it look like in the twenty-first century? Um, and what does that mean, and I think that that would be beneficial.
I personally, I, I think you and I are the same age, but I'd like a little bit of time to.
Oh, absolutely, and it's like informational.
I think putting on for agenda, I mean, at some point, I, I don't disagree with it, but maybe you, you know. Anyone else?
Just a thought, we talked about this before, um, a lot of citizens that travel Route Three, link to Pembroke Hill area are again concerned about the traffic. May or may not get worse with the closing of Village. But one thing I, I try, I think I voiced this before, trying to encourage parents to put their kids on the bus. What can we do, can we investigate moving forward? You know, and anyone, the, the social media pages, parents complaining about the buses. I don't have any experience, you know, first-hand knowledge, but again, um, social media, so, you know, nobody bothers to contact you, but that's everything. But maybe it's something we could try and figure out how to encourage that, you know. I, I.
Maybe we, we could do a survey, give the parents who bring their students to school and just ask, you know, three question, like, are you, are you bringing them convenience? Are you bringing them because you don't like the bus ride, or, you know, would you maybe have another option to use it?
Something like that, uh, I'm just gonna, but I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines of even like marketing it, you know. I don't know how to, that's not like, you know. You just, just a thought, put out there, investigate, wait until we encourage bus rides.
Tom's wrong. I need to, to struggle directly.
Yeah.
So I, I need to, it's gonna be, I, no matter what you do, it's increased traffic over there, but I need to try and, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was obviously a little, I'll say that getting to the hill school is strange, like. God, you're down Pembroke Street and the school was here, you have to do this.
Right.
But that you have to do that, it spreads the traffic out. I go up there every morning and it's even there, I mean, if I'm there at great wind, all the other cars are there and I'll have to wait. Or if I'm ten minutes later than that, the traffic moves. And if you double the number of cars, the traffic moves, it's thanks to have more cars around your house for most people. But it, I were not close to the point where the traffic was the actual problem. It's not stopping, it, it flows very well. I still think, um, I wish we could plow over a house and just drive to the school. But, you know, it is what it is, and at least having as long stretches of road does, you know, spread the traffic a little bit. And sometimes, you know, sometimes coming off the hill is a little, a little hairy, but the light is, definitely helps. And I guess, I'm anxious to see what actually happens. It could be more traffic than we think, if, you know, the number of families that lives in the village that used to walk now has to drive. But who knows, it'll be interesting to see how it shakes up.
Are there any impact studies? Jenny did something, it's been a couple of years now, but she, I think, I wanted to use her data additional at that time, um, just a survey, um, knowing that there would be siblings, um, that was now meaningful. You know, they were coming to Hill with one sibling and, um, but like I said, that was a couple of years ago. It wasn't a huge.
Which said, Jen, Jen Jones, she does, say, for its score, uh, twenty teachers.
It's like a safety goal.
Yes, but the great thing is we'll know every year about the difficulty getting from one school to the next.
Right.
Go!
Yes.
No.
Do we have an update about that supposed development, writing that in our meetings?
Which one?
On the flag, Robinson, fourth range, Pembroke Hill, right in the.
Oh, the one up, up at the top, yeah.
I went out, I went to Slipwood. Maybe five weeks ago now, oh, it was on the ground, so I got that information, but yeah, it looks like the developer had, it's stuck to their own, what the, um, David's title, tell supervisor.
Sorry.
So what he expressed at the time is the way the law reads, um, along the thing, all the stuff there's supposed to do, there's not really a function to block it or anything like that. So, but, and so far, based on that, they're fairly far along with the process. It looks like the thing that's most likely to happen, I don't know the timeline.
Another is talking to, uh, you know, it's, I talked about a few of these on roads.
Right.
And, you know, parents, but concerns again, with Hill School and all that stuff. And, uh, you know, like, again, like Amy said, they were moving forward. Uh, they are going to make the developer darn all the road development all at once. So that could be, you know, that could be a sticking point in the whole project, if they're willing to do that.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? Good. Uh, public comments?
I, I have a question, and it may be rhetorical. Is the traffic problem on, I don't go up there in the morning, and my wife goes typically before, it's, it's sending up the school. Is the traffic problem on like Road Curly Blanger, or is the traffic problem from below to the town?
I think it's the light, my understanding is the light, how, when it comes down, cameras.
I think, yeah, that's probably, that's probably the, the biggest.
I don't think it's coming off the hill, it's coming down in town. Main road.
It's hard found on three towards Cal. And as soon as you pass that light, everything's a little, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I, I would just be cautious about using too much time on China, the energy of traffic, before you know what it's gonna be when the town is, when the China is, it's gonna get that problem, because the state didn't want that light there, it was too predictable, so we, we have to kind of follow it, so.
Who else? Okay, we have the, we have a non-public session, I don't know if you guys already say, ninety-one dash eight, code three, code two, locate H P and A on roll call. They want.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, uh, motion to, to, not a public session.
Motion to approve.
One second. I'll pay it.
Aye.
But you now need certified staff for contact for this, please.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Two seconds.
Question, I'll pay it.
Aye.
Okay, we have a staff resignation before we proceed, please.
Question board.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
There is a motion for to approve resignation. Uh, question, comment? How about the favor to accept the nomination?
Um.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion that a fairway resignation penalty of three hundred dollars be exempt to that resignation.
Okay, second, three, any discussion? I'll pay it.
Aye.
Last one? Um, three?
Yeah.
You got it.
No, I. I need to make that a moment. Uh, for reviewing, studying, putting it out, those four tuition options for students at A R D to attend TRS.
Second. It's a question. Hey, I'll overpay it.
May, just to let you know, as long as you're okay with this, um, now that now the town has acted on this and we have acted on this, um, Peter has prepared a press release to let the public know that we're doing this.
Okay.
So you're aware that we can shut up at some point.
No.
Is there anything to make a motion for?
We have to nominate.
Someone has to.
We need to nominate two reps to, to the committee, for now, so.
I'll nominate you and me.
That's fine, that's fine, we did, we did start. I mean, if somebody else has burning desire, I, do you have some sides off, I have to do it as well?
I have no burning desire, but if you're reluctant, but if that way, okay, I, I'd be willing to. It's like a horse.
Pat, you have a motion for, for.
Nobody will show.
I do.
You don't need to be with it.
I'm going down, I'm going down.
Okay, um, I'll pay it.
Aye.
You know, another.
I think I forgot anything else.
Um, we have something about the number of, number of students.
Okay.
Uh, motion to adjourn. Second, three.
The, the motion, Pat?
No, I didn't, I wish it to adjourn.
Second, somebody, I mean, you're saying all night, you're like. Want to say it all, pay it?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Graduating, your first, first meeting. At the top, it's probably.